Good evening and welcome to the August 19 City Council meeting. If you'd join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Here's Orlovsky, roll call please.
Luke Kellier.
Here.
John Bermal.
Here.
Dan Walter.
Joshua Lee.
Very good. Moving on to citizens comments is an opportunity for those to address the council. If there's any issues for up to three minutes, if you do, you can just come up and state your name and address. Okay, seen none. Moving on. Any additional agenda information, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 6E, there's a revised item on your agenda. There was simply a misspelled word.
Okeydoke. Moving on to item number five, presentations, introductions, and I'll turn it over to Police Chief Paulson for the Police Department Quarterly Report. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Queued up before you tonight is our second quarter report covering the months of April, May, and June. As we always do, we start out with our mission statement to kind of provide the framework of all the work that we do and the information that will follow in the report tonight. Lakeville Police Department exists to ensure an excellent quality of life in Lakeville by serving and protecting in a professional and innovative way. Kicking things off with some promotional news, Jeremy Lurfeld was promoted from officer to sergeant back in May. As you can see, under the experience label there, Jeremy has a wealth of policing experience, 27 years in all, including 13 here at Lakeville PD. A lot of key positions he's held over the years from SWAT to K-9, School Resource Officer and Investigation. So he will, and already has, brought a lot of experience to that position and will be very well received and respected. I just want to note one thing on promotions with our sergeants, we have eight sergeants, they're all in our patrol division, but quite often there's certainly good things that come with promotion, people seek those out for good reason, but there's also a certain degree of sacrifice as well when you're talking about work that involves 24-hour coverage and seniority. A lot of times those sergeants are moving to the bottom of a seniority list coming from near the top. So some sacrifice with work schedules and things like that, so we're always happy when people take that step to lend their expertise in a leadership position with our agency. Records Technician Position that was opened due to a retirement, we hired Brittany Brown back in June. Brittany brings a good variety of experience for us, coming from a couple of different dispatching roles with Minnesota State Patrol, as well as right here in Dakota County with Dakota 911. Most recently, she was at Dakota County Sheriff's Office where she was a Senior Program Service Assistant. So she's had a lot of good experience dealing with public safety and the workflow that is associated with that type of work. And then a new position for us this year, which kicked off in full in June, is our Support Services Liaison Position. So Natalie Anderson picture there is not new to our agency, but is new to this position. So this position really streamlines a lot of our services and connections with our embedded folks, from our social worker from Dakota County Social Services, our crisis response workers, our 360 victim advocate, all of those folks that office out of our police department and provide great resources. Natalie will now be working as our liaison with them to provide a variety of support. Mental health calls certainly both in progress and follow-up, but also some education and streamlining of other services that are affiliated with all of those roles as well. So you can see there Natalie had experience with our mental health team, as well as obviously a patrol officer and school resource officer. Our mental health team is made up of about 10 to 12 officers, and that will no longer be in effect. We are now moving that all through Natalie's position, just to again streamline things a little bit. I think it's important to note that Natalie will not be the only one doing mental health work in our police department. I use the analogy of our traffic unit, the traffic car specializes and deals with a lot of our hot areas, but all of our officers do some degree of traffic enforcement, and that will be no different in this position with regards to mental health. Highlighting some events from quarter two on May 15th is National Law Enforcement, National Peace Officers Memorial Day, I guess is the official term, but a lot of recognition across the country, obviously out in Washington DC at the National Memorial, but also here in the state on the Capitol grounds with the state memorial. So we send officers up every year to stand guard, there's a 24-hour period where that is covered by law enforcement personnel from across the state. So we always like to have a contingency up there to take a shift in doing that, to honor those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in our profession. And this year, obviously more meaning as well with the loss of two police officers and a medic in Burnsville back in February. From a community engagement perspective, a few events highlighted there on the far left is a vehicle fair, which was coordinated by Lakeville Community Ed, all kinds of fun trucks, vehicles, school buses, garbage trucks, police cars, fire trucks, all kinds of things for kids to jump in and climb around, we were happy to participate with some squad cars in that event. In the middle, there is something new for us that we kicked off this year, a cops and bobbers event, where we pair police officers with youth in doing some fishing out on Orchard Lakes. So staff members dedicated their boats and some equipment to jump in a boat with some kids and enjoy some time fishing for about an hour and a couple of different shifts there. But nobody fell out of the boat, no hooked ears or other limbs, no record fish caught, but certainly some fish on the line and a lot of good times and good connection with many of our youth in that event. And then on the right, our movie night we've done for a couple of years now at Lakeville North on the turf. I think the movie this year was Migration, but beautiful weather night, which is always helpful when we do these events. But you can see a picture there of Officer Raymond running around having some fun with the kids out on the turf. Highlighting a grant that we were awarded earlier this year from a police officer position standpoint to fund what we're calling a cadet position. And so what this does is allows us to hire someone who does not currently have a law enforcement degree. They're not eligible to be a police officer yet, but they have a two or four-year degree in some capacity from an accredited institution. We hire them on, do the traditional background check and all of that, and then we facilitate them getting into a program at Hennepin County Technical College, paying them at a cadet wage and covering their tuition throughout the term of the program, which runs from mid-October through March of 2025, so it's kind of a condensed program there. When they're done in March, we are eligible then to hire them full-time as a police officer, and we get reimbursed for up to $50,000 of those expenses for wages and tuition. So good way for us hopefully to expand our candidate pool and look at some other folks that maybe wouldn't have come to us through a more traditional route. A few bullet points here to highlight training and development as we always do. Obviously, that's a big priority for us, not only just maintaining our minimum standards as licensed officers, but also hopefully exceeding those standards to deliver the quality that our community desires and expects. Couple on top there, anytime you see all sworn, that's all 68 police officers that have to get through a certain amount of training every year, and it's highlighted in a couple of bullet points, but it's a lot of work, there's a lot of moving parts there to get people all through those trainings from firearms to defensive tactics and the less lethal, non-lethal skills, and those aren't everything certainly. But just to make mention of the dedication and coordination it takes to pull that stuff off. Mental health there, a few bullet points down, again, those are minimum standards met by or required by the post board. Again, we try to get and do get far and above those mandated hours, and those are all on a three-year licensing cycle for police officers. And a couple of other kind of one-off trainings there with basic narcotics and investigations 101, those are more geared towards an officer or a couple of officers that are starting a new assignment and need some additional training as they step into those roles. Highlighting here an Employee Wellness Initiative, Abijas on the Backside is an organization that's been spoken about here, I think, at council before, but it's retired thoroughbred horses out at Canterbury Park that help with therapy for first responders and military personnel either struggling or just wanting to kind of work through some of the associated challenges that come with these types of careers. And we've had for the last few years mandatory wellness check-ins with all of our staff members, not just officers, but department-wide staff. Generally more a traditional therapist route that people pursue with those mandatory check-ins, but we've added Abijas this year as one of the options people can choose from, just to kind of expose people to a totally different kind of therapy. As many people know, you know, different types of people, different types of therapy click with other folks. And so we just wanted to offer this as a new option, and it's been very well received, and they do a lot of great work out there. I know the fire department has been out and involved out there as well. So it's kind of one of those things you have to see or experience to fully understand it, I think, but it's a pretty cool event all the way around from our staff to the thoroughbreds that still provide great value out there even though they're retired from racing. A few cases of distinction to highlight here, and when we look at these, we look for something where we can maybe highlight a specific unit in our agency or a collaborative effort within our agency or community, and I think all three of these do that. On the left there, you see two incidents or investigations that our Street Crimes Unit was involved with. And our Street Crimes Unit is a two-person unit, generally plain-clothed, and they do a lot of what we would call low-level crimes that can snowball into much bigger crimes. So these might be cases that our investigators wouldn't pick up based on, they just don't meet a certain threshold, but our Street Crimes Unit kind of digs into these, pokes around a little bit and tries to build some cases that become bigger things. And both of these highlighted here were exactly that. On the upper left, this started as theft of a commercial trailer from an outdoor storage facility in town. Through some good work by our Street Crimes Officers, they recovered the trailer up in Eagan, which resulted in a lot of extra or additional search warrants, interviews, and ultimately over $100,000 of stolen property, a felony level of narcotics, and a person who was in possession of a lot of ammunition that was not permitted to be based on their criminal history. And then on the bottom left there, this was a case that started out as theft from motor vehicles at a residential housing complex in town. And again, through some investigation, collaboration with other agencies and sharing suspect photos and vehicle descriptions, they identified some suspects and found that this group of folks had impacted several communities, were able to recover a lot of the initial stolen property through Facebook Marketplace and returned some items to owners and hold those accountable that were involved. And then on the right, Domestic Disturbance that really worked itself into a fairly large-scale event for a period of time out in our Brackets Crossing neighborhood area. This came in with a little bit of limited information, was a pretty dynamic call coming in, but some concerning information involving a firearm potentially and a domestic situation that we took very seriously for good reason, but a lot of ground to cover in a golf course on a nice summer day, a lot of activity going on. But just wanted to highlight the work with Mutual Aid, which was quickly in place, with staff members out of Brackets Crossing, which did an outstanding job of getting their employees to safe positions, and ultimately, everything ended up with a person taken into custody and nobody being injured, which is always the end goal. Few slides with some case files here, you can see April through June, these are police reports that were filed. We are down about 250 reports this quarter versus the same quarter in 2023. And then our Crisis Response Unit calls, these are highlighted, these calls come into dispatch, and they are then filtered out and pushed right over to Dakota County Social Services Crisis Response Unit in hopes that police don't need to get involved if it's not something that warrants police being there or if the caller does not want police there. So you can see there 34 total calls in this quarter, and ultimately, 80% of those were handled with police never being involved. So I think when this was set up, that's the goal, is to see that trend, and it certainly looks like that's developing. And that's pretty consistent countywide with those 80/20 numbers. Calls for service during quarter two on welfare check and mental health, you can see both welfare checks and mental health were down by quite a bit. You know, we're always hopeful that some of the initiatives that we're doing and some of the streamlining of services and embedded folks that we're putting into place are making a difference. And it's not always easy to draw a direct line, but certainly encouraged to see some of those numbers dropping in 2024. And then from a traffic standpoint, traffic stops were down by about 600, property damage accidents were up a little bit, but personal injury were down, and again, personal injury or any reported injury doesn't necessarily mean someone was ushered away in an ambulance. If someone complains of being hurt, it is classified as a personal injury crash. And then just a comparison to some of our neighboring agencies in similar size and scope there, we're pretty consistent where we've been in comparison to these communities in the past. And then some of our criminal offenses that we highlight each quarter, DUI arrests are down. Certainly not because we're not out there looking for them, there's been several saturation patrols and things like that in town, but good to see those numbers coming down a little bit. Aggravated assaults are down, simple assaults are down, motor vehicle thefts up a little bit, but also a drop in weapons and sex offenses. So love to see a drop in those every time, doesn't always happen, obviously. And then finally, just a note on our social media presence, it's a way that we're always trying to continue to interact with the community, both by providing timely information, but also having a little fun on the way and just kind of bridging that gap and making sure we're connecting with our folks. And I'd really like to see our officers highlighted and show them in a personal, kind of a more lighthearted note, because all too often they're seen responding to calls for service where they don't have the opportunity to relax quite as much as they do here. So on the left there, you see Officer Warden stopping out to enjoy a little game of basketball with a group of kids in the neighborhood. In the middle, we're just highlighting a donation from a local motorcycle club that supported our Pink Patch Project. And then everybody loves a puppy, throw a puppy photo out and everybody's happy, so it's always good to have. With that, I will stand for any questions or comments you may have.
Did you get the therapy dog?
We have not yet, no.
Okay.
I did see you commented on that, I appreciate that.
I said it was fine. Counsel?
Yeah, John.
Yeah, just great report. It just always strikes me how I love to see the movement in the agency and people having opportunities, and we've seen a couple of those with this report in the programs that you have that collaborate with the community and your desire to pull mental health resources in. And I think that 80/20 stat was really telling in terms of how you're devoting resources to address issues in the community. And then, of course, there's always the case reviews, nothing warms the heart more than a story about cops holding criminals accountable. It's almost as good as the puppy picture. So yeah, well done.
Thank you.
Joshua.
I know this isn't part of the quarter that you were talking about, but we've just ended a season of a lot of community events, and there's been a lot of hours put on the clock to support those. So thank you to you and your team for being there for Panaprog and National Night Out and Taste of Lakeville, and the list goes on and on.
Thank you. Stay tuned for quarter three, we'll highlight some of those. We appreciate that, and a lot of volunteer hours too, which don't always get noted, but we have a lot of volunteers that are out there logging some pretty long days and some pretty hot weather, so thank you.
Chief, we had a number of interactions about things that I noticed on social media with, it seems like everybody's got cameras in their house and their doorbells and other places, and they have images of what they perceive as crimes happening and so forth, and posted first to next door or Facebook or something like that. Do you have people that are monitoring that, or how do you approach that?
Yeah, the mainstream social media, we have people monitoring. I mean, sometimes people will have access to video that we don't hear about for whatever reason, but we always encourage folks, we would rather be aware of some video if people think they have something that might be of value. It's much easier for us to say it's not something we need than find out later or after the fact that, boy, if we would have had that key piece of video in the early stages, things might have turned out a lot differently. So we have, through our Axon system, we can send out a link to citizens that they can use that portal just to upload really most of the home surveillance systems that are out there, makes it pretty easy on their behalf. So we're always happy to have that conversation and to vet that footage to see if it's something that may be of value if people are willing to share it.
And a follow-up, one of the recent ones on that was video of people going, you know, a group of people going through a neighborhood and seemingly checking cars to see if there were open doors, that sort of thing. Are we seeing any kind of uptick in that, and what kind of advice do you have for people?
Yeah, I wouldn't say an uptick, I think it's pretty consistent with what we've seen in the past. It's weather-dependent a little bit, nice summer nights, we see a lot more than we do in February, obviously. But by and large, if folks are locking their vehicles, closing their garage doors, they're eliminating most of those issues. These are crimes of opportunity, they're rattling door handles, they're looking for open garage, there's something that they can grab quickly, that's of value. So we would all love to not have to lock things up, but you do eliminate a lot of those issues if you take those extra steps.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now we'll shift gears and turn it over to our Fire Chief Meyer for our Fire Department Quarterly Report. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'd like to present the Second Quarter Fire Department Report for 2024. And I will also start with our mission statement, the Lakeville Fire Department is dedicated to serving the community through the protection of lives and property by providing public safety education and a professional emergency response. Looking at incidents as far as comparing them three years back, so on the left side you can see 22 to 24, you can see a slight increase, 909 calls for the second quarter compared to 23 and 22. And then breaking on the right side, breaking that down by the month and the quarter, we're fairly consistent except for May. You can see there was an uptick in calls, 319 compared to 262 in May, but we're running about 8% in front of what we were last year as far as total call volume. And then looking at those 909 calls for the second quarter as far as how they're broken down on the left side, about 65% of our call volume is to medicals, and then you can see the good intent calls, how it goes down from there. The right side is just showing, I wanted to show first quarter, second quarter, because we did see a pretty good increase in overlapping calls, and that's 173 compared to 244, and you can see in there that in the 244, we had two incidents, 232 times that we had two or more incidents occurring, three incidents at 10 times, and then four incidents twice in the second quarter. For us, that kind of stresses our system where we're not just using one truck, we're calling out multiple stations to cover those incidents. Looking at station totals as far as this, and this is something, obviously, when we started staffing an engine with full-time as far as 24/7, we knew we were going to see a decrease in the station call-outs, and that's showing there. But then we also knew that that duty crew, that staffed engine was going to see an increase in call volume. And typically, in the evening hours after 10:00 PM, that was when our duty crew ended previous staffing a full-time engine, is that they're covering those overnight calls. So we were seeing less pages overnight for the most part for the stations. And just to highlight a couple of the calls in the second quarter, obviously, we started in spring pretty dry, so we did see quite a few grass slash brush fires. These two are just significant ones that we did have, but the left one, just the advantage of having a drone team or a drone get in the air quickly over that fire so we can see where it's going, and then we can also backtrack into it to find any of the hot spots that we may have missed as we go through it. And then the bottom right was a gentleman that had a recreational fire, and his large woodpile was right next to it, and the wind came up on him and caught the whole woodpile on fire, and it was pretty, his house is actually on the other side of those trees that you can see in that picture there, so we were working pretty hard to make sure we didn't extend towards the structure of the house. Just looking at response times, so this is generalized as far as for the stations and the duty crew, so looking at first quarter to second quarter, the red line shows PSAP to arrival, and PSAP is from the time that the phone rings at our dispatch center until we put a unit on scene. It's fairly consistent, you can see there was a slight dip with station four in the second quarter, but the times remain fairly consistent as far as we did see a drop. I'll say in the second quarter, our yellow line shows from dispatch to en route, or that's our turnout time as we look at it. And we know staffing a station from the time that we get a call to the firefighters arriving at the station is kind of our longest time as far as that goes. You can see on the far right on the yellow line how it drops to the duty crew, it's remained pretty consistent at 2 minutes 24 seconds, and I'll have a slide later with the staffed engine to show the difference in that. And as I mentioned, year-to-date calls, so as of today, we're at 2207 for calls, that's about an 8% increase comparing last year to this year, 1776 to 1612. And again, roughly 65% of those calls are medicals. Little bit about training, I don't have any nice pictures for training, but some of the topics that we did cover, our auto extrication, live burn, core training is something that we implemented this year, and what we mean by core training is that we run through a full-blown scenario. So our first training that we did in the second quarter was actually at Old Public Works, where we simulated a fire in the building and crews responding, going through the entire scenario, potentially searching, extinguishing a fire, finding a victim, bringing the victim out, ladder-ing the building, all of the core essentials that we have to do as a firefighter. We hosted fire instructor training for part of our ALF Academy, and then I'll highlight a few more hours, but our duty crew shift training and fitness that our staff is doing also. Looking at fire inspections for our second quarter, we had 232 inspections done. And just to show you some numbers, as far as out of those 232, 84 were found with violations, it gives you a percentage there. 49 with open violations, and then the far right number, the 168, just to highlight that, is just occupancies that we didn't touch basically in the second quarter that didn't have an inspection scheduled. And the graph just shows how we break those inspections apart. A little bit of change of how we're looking at the data as an annual inspection, as a full-blown inspection that we go through a building from basically from the front door to the back door, looking at all things fire service-related as far as alarms, extinguishers, exits and such. And then the right or the left side of that graph there shows just different data sets how we're looking at inspections. So the routine follow-up, as an example, at 7% is if we respond on a fire alarm to a business, our fire inspection team is going to go up and follow up to make sure that we're getting that problem corrected or they're taking the appropriate steps. A slight uptick on our food truck inspection, so we're at 22% compared to previous years. And then a key box, just to note what that is, is that we're using our duty crew to go out and do, basically, every commercial building has a key box for us to gain access after hours, so our duty crew goes out, inspects the key box, make sure that the keys that are in it are still, gives us access in there because sometimes they change locks without telling us, so that's what we're using our staffed engine to go out and take care of those. Fire prevention and community events, so just moving from left to right. We do a number of scout troop safety and first aid talks, whether they're at the station or at a choice of their preference where they're having their meetings. We ended basically the school year with all the middle school, sixth grade class going through fire extinguisher training, roughly about 900 kids. A number of fire safety talks at daycare centers and events. I believe that picture, that picture is from the North Park, the truck rally that we were talking about. And then fire safety talks, station visits that we get scheduled quite frequently. And as you know, we hired our first six full-time firefighters. They officially started roughly mid-February, but March 4th, they started a 30-day academy. That was a joint academy with Burnsville, Eagan, and South Metro. They completed that the weekend prior to April 15th, and April 15th was our Go Live with 24/7 coverage. The center picture is the six firefighters that we hired, five of those were internal, one was an external candidate. The picture to the right of them all sitting on the floors, they're actually doing training, they're doing what's called a breathe-down skill. So they've bled their air bottle- they're doing what's called a breathe-down skill, so they've bled their air bottle down to basically an emergency status, and they're working on called skip breathing or a different way of breathing to try to use that air as long as they can before they run out. And then the left one is they went through three days of live burn training at our ABLE And just to give you a snapshot of since April 15th with the duty, with that staffed engine, response time on the left side, so you can see dispatch to arrival, they're running, so the red is pre, prior to us staffing that engine, and the yellow is post, so April 15th until today. They're running about just under, call it 10 minutes as far as from a dispatch to arrival time, and then you can see the drop in our en route or our dispatch to en route, our turnout time of getting on the truck and getting out of the station. And then the right side response time, excuse me, I just highlighted a few of the fires that we've had or some medicals that we've had, just to give you a snapshot of how quickly they are getting on scene and taking care of that. Kind of a hard thing to look at or to summarize is them getting on scene faster on a fire as an example is we're saving a lot of property damage because we're maintaining or getting that fire knocked down faster than letting it grow. The medicals, the four that you can see to the right are just our response, so we're getting there prior to the ambulance, we're starting interventions, the overdose, we actually administered Narcan, the patient was conscious even before the ambulance arrived on scene. And then I know, Mayor, you had asked us at my previous one, but just to give you an idea, we're arriving with that staffed engine 60% of the time in front of the ambulance. Some of the on-shift training, so they completed 452 hours of training on shift since April 15th. Fire prevention education, so it seems a pretty small number, but we're just getting our handle, our feet underneath us and running with this, but we got 17 hours that they've gone out and done fire prevention visits, and three of our firefighters just completed their child seat safety installation certification. And then also the crews are out daily, weekly, doing either truck checks, they're going to every station to make sure that they're up and ready to go, and they're also doing cleaning at the stations too. In April, we started a recruitment process for pay-on-call firefighters, so you can kind of see the timeline there. Last week was their first week of orientation, so we hired two firefighters for Station 1, two for Station 2, and three for Station 3. And they will complete their orientation at the end of this month and start their full-blown Fire 1, Fire 2, and EMR medical training. And a few months ago, we had Chris Mogan in front of you that retired from the fire department with 23 years of service. And then on April 4th, we were part of the first responder recognition at the Twins opener that also recognized the three fallen first responders from Burnsville. And just to mention a few public safety, Lakeville Public Safety events, so May, we hosted Firehouse Bingo at Station 1. June was Bourbon and Cigars, and also in June was the Police and Fire Golf Tournament. That concludes my second quarter report, and thank you for your support, and I'll stand for any questions.
Counsel, questions, comments, yeah, John?
Just a comment on, well, a comment then a question, a comment, well done, and I love the community engagement, and it's good to see those full-time firefighters. So if I understood this correctly, did they start working in April?
They started, officially started shift work April 15th, so that 24/7 coverage. From a hiring standpoint, they actually started mid-February, but then they spent 30 days at a fire academy prior to moving to on-shift work.
Okay, and it's probably too early to tell, but with the stats on response times, have you noticed a difference since we've had people here full-time or?
Yep, the one piece that is our, the turnout time is what we've really been focused to make sure that they're getting out the door, and that roughly a minute 30 seconds is our goal. Unfortunately, our drive time from the station to the scene, we can't really control much, so what we can focus on is getting them out the door fast and then, you know, as quickly as they can, and I'll say the nice piece that I can't put a, I can't really say to it, but just having consistency of those two full-time people in the front of the truck or on the truck of they're always going the same route to a scene versus, we all have different ways how we get through the city, but they're finding the most efficient way to get there, and then with the amount of construction that happens in the summer and such, that they're more aware of what's going on as far as those pieces that may redirect them to that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense, thank you.
Well, one thing, thank you for highlighting that number, the three out of five calls that we arrive before Alpha is interesting and something I'll continue to follow. But then I did see, and I would tell you, I mean, if you're somebody who calls 911 and you, within three minutes and 23 seconds of an overdose, we have somebody there, is pretty impressive. So kudos to your team for really being engaged, that's very fast. So thank you, appreciate the report.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, any items you'd like to highlight, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, just two tonight, Mayor. Item 6C is a resolution accepting donations from our Lakeville Liquors customers. This session of fundraising raised $26,000 and is going toward our environmental resources programming, and we appreciate that. And then item 6M is a revised sponsorship and advertising policy for our park facilities and naming of our city parks, and that went through the Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources Committee before coming to you.
Okay, great. Counsel, any items you'd like to highlight or discuss further? I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion of the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, consent agenda passes. Moving on to seven, eight, and nine, there's nothing there. For announcements, our next meeting is next week, August 26th, that's a work session here in the new Lake Marion Conference Room, and our next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, September 3rd, the day after Labor Day. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, we're adjourned.